Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page. To see the Commissioners' page.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board Meeting. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think the dog was reciting the pledge too, huh? Okay. Our inspirational word for this morning comes from Matthew. Jesus said, "God bless those who work for peace, for they will be called the children of God." And Lori has our vocal dog this morning.
Now we're on. Good morning, everybody. We have a little Bichon mix. He's a male, about four years old. When is he available?
On Saturday.
He will be available on Saturday. He's very cute, very nervous, so come down to the Lorraine County Dog County. Check us out on Facebook. He wants to go in with you, Lisa. All right. Thank you.
Want to stay for the meeting? Yeah, there you go.
Lisa, you sure you don't want a puppy?
Well, we have a busy meeting this morning, a lot of presentations. We're going to begin this morning with American Recycles Day. And Brandy Schnell with our Lorraine County Solid Waste. You have an update for us this morning, and then we have a proclamation for you.
Thanks, Commissioners. So for America Recycles Day this year, it happens every year on November 15th. We are going to be having a display of our calendar contest winners at the Carlisle Visitors Center that will run now through November 20th. And we also have a pledge card up on our county website for anybody who would like to sign the pledge that they will recycle more in the upcoming year and pledge to learn more about recycling in their community. And we will be doing a pledge drive in all of the Lorraine County schools. And the teachers who return their pledge cards will be entered into a drawing for a pizza party contest, which we will be doing the drawing for next week at the Commissioners' Meeting. And then I believe we have a proclamation.
We do have a proclamation for each year lucky day. We've got, we're pointing out in the proclamation, each year Americans generate more than 250 million tons of municipal solid waste. That is more than four pounds per person per day. According to EPA, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of 34.5 percent. Because of collection efforts, we've collected over 262 million pounds of material to be recycled or reused, engaged 5.5 million students about the importance of reducing and reusing and recycling, and avoided greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 87,000 cars from the road each year. And with this kind of progress, we're recognizing today in Lorraine County as American, not today, I'm sorry, November 15th, as America Recycles Day. So I'll come down and give this to you. And up next, we have members of the OSU Extension Office. Good morning, everyone. And maybe it'd be a good thing to have everybody introduce themselves, and then we'll put your presentation up on the screen.
Sure. So I'm John Shanehalls. I started in June of this year as the County Ag and Natural Resources Educator and County Director for Extension. With me, we have Elizabeth Share. She is the 4H educator. She's been here a year ago, June. Sally Hennessy is a 4H Program Assistant. She started in April of this past year. And she works with the STEM Pathways Initiative. Julie Mackey has been with us about three years in our office. And so we're just going to go through a brief presentation on what we've been up to this past year.
Okay.
Wonderful. Good.
As you said, my name's Liz Share. I provide programmatical supervision to all of our 4H youth programs in Lorraine County. We have over 2,000 youth that we serve through multiple programs with 355 volunteers. I'm really rather proud of the volunteers this year. They've completed over 1,600 hours of training together to improve their breadth of knowledge in different areas, as well as they go through what we call a Child Abuse Policy 1.50. So all of our volunteers are not only aware of the signs of child abuse, but they're ready to report in all aspects of their lives. We had over 2,500 projects exhibited at the Lorraine County Junior Fair, which is a culmination of a year of work of our youth, from anything from cake decorating and robotics to livestock and photography. We had 835 teaching contacts as it related to volunteer management and development, and that could be trainings that I put on, or trainings throughout the state that our volunteers decide to go to. And we also had over 1,700 teaching contacts related to animal science. Where I'm, either I serve as an equine specialist for the State of Ohio, so I'm either going around to owners, talking about pasture management and other things, or we're talking with Julie and we're teaching our youth about best practices to ensure quality care of their animals. We also just wanted to hit on, we had a grant from the 4H Foundation this year that enabled us to do a team building activity with our counselors. As we know, in youth development, trust, communication, and teamwork are those key soft skills that we need our youth to learn to transition into the adult world. And we accomplished them understanding the importance of teamwork, building trust with their fellow teens, broadening their cooperation skills, and we even improved verbal and nonverbal communication within that group of teens. 100% of them reported improving leadership and teamwork skills as a result of our High Ropes and Low Ropes course, as well as improved outlook in being counselors for our camp season. So we're very proud of them.
Hi. I'm Sally Hennessy, and I've been charged with helping to increase the number of STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, opportunities for youth K through 12 in Lorraine County. And we've accomplished that by providing a lot of hands-on activities for students that engage them in something that really relates to a STEM career. Since I've started in April, we've actually done, I've actually done this in 11 different locations throughout Lorraine County, and a whole bunch of those continue today. And since, this is not meant to be silly, but since I've started, I've really seen a lot less complaining about having to do science. And just, they're really getting into it. It's really neat. And the 4H curriculum, the STEM Pathways curriculum, gives them a really concrete connection to a career. They're doing something and we're saying, hey, this is materials engineering. You know, it's a really concrete way to teach them something, and we've seen some really good results. So that's what I do.
Okay. I'm Julie Mackey, and in addition to the regular 4H programming, I'm also involved in the mentoring program. And studies have shown that youth do much better once they have adults who really care about them, listen to them, and give them the time that they need. So part of our Tech Resource Program is adult mentors who work with these youth in a four-to-one ratio. The adults work with them, teaching them life skills, working on STEM-related activities as well. With this, we've seen results of students who are doing much better in school, much better attitudes. They're willing to try new things that they would not have been willing to try before we started working with them. So they've improved their attitudes about learning, and their grades are improving as well in the schools.
And then as the Ag and Natural Resources Educator in Lorraine County, I work with a variety of stakeholders. Traditionally, the farmers, greenhouses, and nurseries would have been my main clientele. And so we do a variety of programs with them. Private pesticide applicator recertification training is something that has traditionally been done during the winter months for those individuals. Some of the new state regulations around fertilizer application, we're now doing trainings for that to help improve the water quality in our lakes and rivers. I did some on-farm research this past year in Lorraine County, monitoring a variety of pests that affect sweet corn, field corn, berries, grapes, things like that, getting a sense of what is present in the county, what measures farmers need to be taking to make sure they can provide necessary management for that. And I also do a lot of individual consultations with farmers and other growers, walking through the fields, talking about the issues and how they can manage that the best. In Lorraine County, it's certainly agriculture. Traditional ag is an important role, but it's, Lorraine County is also more of an urban county, and we recognize that. And so I've been doing a lot of efforts with homeowners in the county. At this point, I've had about 220 individual consultations with homeowners, questions related to their garden, their lawn, trees, ornamentals. They'll bring samples by the office. I help to identify that. And then we work with research-based information to give them a control option. Either they can do themselves, or so they have the information to make a wise professional decision if they hire somebody. And then looking into the future too, I have the goal of working with organizations in schools that are doing community gardens and being a resource effort for them as well. Just really briefly touching on a couple other program areas in our office, we have the 4H Car Teens Program. This is a traffic safety initiative where youth who have a moving violation in the county come for a program. It's in partnership with the Probate Courts and the Ohio Highway Patrol. And they'll go through this presentation, reminding them of the laws and the importance. And it's shown that when students go through that, they have less of a chance of being a repeat offender in that way. We also have SNAP and FNET programming in Lorraine County. Right now, there's one individual doing SNAP Ed, and we're hiring two more of those individuals, starting in November, end of this month, and then next month. These are both federally grant-funded programs through the USDA, that we can house them in our Extension Office, as Extension provides the housing for that in the county. And they, they help families and individuals make wise decisions related to food purchasing and wellness. And our FNET person is really going to focus on minority populations in the county, as she is bilingual and can reach through some of those barriers. So we just wanted to thank you again for your support over this past year, and also recognize some of the other individuals in the county who make our work possible. We work with a wide variety of schools and organizations. This is an incomplete list of some of the partners in our programming. And we'd invite you to reach out to us if you have any questions about anything that we do, or how we can better serve the county. In our packet of information, all of our contact is in there, as well as our regional supervisor, Jackie Wilkins, who is unable to be here today. But we thank you for your time, and we appreciate being here today.
Thank you. Very nice presentation.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the job that you do, and you know, I know you operate with a very slim and narrow budget. Have you had any conversations with leaders in Columbus, whether they'd be willing to step up and provide some additional funding, or federal leaders? They have the deep pockets in Columbus, we don't.
Yeah. Those conversations are certainly always ongoing. My position is made available through some money from the State Office, for two years at least. And certainly, the state government and the federal government continue to put funding in for Extension, and some of the information in that packet will explain how all that partnership works. But yeah, there's, at this point, we don't know of any major changes that are coming on that, but we're always working on trying to.
Yeah, they'll be going into a new budget cycle, so you need to get in the queue now. We certainly, you know, are struggling with our finances. They've got a $2 billion surplus, and this is good programming, and programming that should be supported strongly by the state especially.
Yeah. And we hope it will continue to be so. But it does require a give and take with the county to put some in for that as well.
Right. I know we've got the local component, but still, you have a pretty slim budget, and you know, I think they, I think they could do a better job too.
Yeah. We'll make that, we'll make that known as we work with our stakeholders in Columbus.
Okay. Thank you. Keep up the great work, doing a good job.
Thank you.
Nice team you have there.
Next, we, and I think this was Commissioner Kokowski, was this your request, I believe, that you wanted to?
Yeah. I attended a presentation back on November 4th at the Lorraine Palace, and it was a tribute to our veterans, and the proceeds are going to Valor Home in Lorraine. And this video really touched me. We have 22 veterans that take their lives every day, and this was a really good tribute. So Ernie, if you can fire this up, so it's like seven minutes long. So bear with us. Bear with us.
Pretty tough to watch, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all the veterans and their spouses were able to attend this at the Palace for free, and then the tickets and whatever else they raised that day went to the Baller Home. Actually, I asked Ron to take that leftover pizza from last night over to Baller Home today for the, our guys over there. So, remember our veterans, they're the reason why we're free, and we had our free elections yesterday, and we needed to keep them in our prayers and make sure. The one thing that they said when you say, you know, "Thank you for your service," and the next thing should be, "Is there anything I could do for you now?" So, thank you for watching that.
Moving.
That's why it's so important, you know, to have our Veterans Treatment Court, because the transition back is a tough transition, and try and help people get their lives on track. It's also sad it took so long in this country to figure out about post-traumatic stress disorders that for generations people have been dealing with who've served our country. And also, it's an alarming high number of the percentage of veterans who aren't working or can't find work, and, you know, it's really important for companies to reach out and put veterans to work, so that's a powerful presentation.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, resolutions?
Investments?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
That would be Administrator Cortez.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. I do have a number of personnel issues I wish to discuss with the board in executive session. Potential hires at Children Family First, Job and Family Services. Also update on ongoing contract negotiations with United Steelworkers of America and the Teamsters now. The, and let's also add the older workers over at Job and Family Services, so I want to bring you up to date on where we're at with those negotiations. In addition to potential sale of real estate, and, that should do it. I think council may have pending litigation. So all of those subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under number nine, approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes on November 2nd, 2016?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 10, under Community Development, award contract to Dr. Jeremy Watson of J. Watson Properties LLC at 160 Park Avenue in Amherst in the amount of $5,201.80, or 50% of the total project cost, up to $10,000, to receive grant assistance from CDBG-FY-15, set aside private rehabilitation activity, to be paid from account number CDBG-DT-15, contractual services.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, see, Don, you have-
We have people here. Don?
Lord, I want to thank you very much for taking this item under consideration. This is a continuation of our downtown revitalization grant of $300,000 that we've been cooperatively working with the City of Amherst and Main Street Amherst. This is the second grant that has been dispersed. This one is for a building located at 160 Park Avenue. And this is actually, next to me is Joni, who owns Sandstone Candle, which is one of the businesses moving in. Wanted to make sure that she was here so that everyone got to understand that, well, we've been making a couple of grants right now, and it's to Dr. Jeremy Watson, who's also located his business. This is supporting additional businesses and job creation and taking up vacancy that was in downtown Amherst. So, if you'd be so kind to let Joni say a couple of words about how this program has actually assisted her in her relocation of her new business to downtown Amherst. Thank you, Joni.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. I was able to, well, Jeremy was able to pass on savings that he got with the grant. He was able to do the roof on the new building, as well as doors and windows, and he was able to pass that savings on to me as the renter. So, with the, I'm not sure if you've seen the article that was in the paper about a week ago that showed that downtown Amherst is filling up with all kinds of businesses. I think we may only have one or two empty spots, and so it's prime to me to be downtown Amherst, and with that funding available, I was, he was able to pass the savings on to me, and I was able to open my business down there.
Well, you need to introduce yourself to everyone, because we're on the public record and talking about, tell us about your business, Joni.
I brought a candle. At Sandstone Candle Works, we're located at 166 Park Avenue. What we do is, not only can you buy candles of single cents right off the shelf, but what the unique thing is that we brought to downtown Amherst and the surrounding area is that you can blend up to three cents and create your own candles. So, there's also body products, room sprays, diffusers, other stuff like that. So, it's not, it's, we're getting more things in too, as well. Well, I just made an order for Crocs and cups and things like that. We also have a girl, actually, that works for me that carves sandstone. So, with the name, we've brought in some sandstone items, and they'll have different cities on them, and different little footprints, and a lot of those were rocks, and she does rock drops with them, and so in different metro parks, she'll pair them up with maybe a coupon from me, and kids can wa, and adults can walk around the metro parks and find the little rocks that she's left along the side of their paths and things.
Cool.
So, yeah.
Unique niche business, been doing well in Amherst.
Yes.
They're doing a nice job there.
We've been open two weeks, and so, I hope they continue during the Christmas season.
Right.
It brings more and more people.
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very neat. Congratulations. Really excited about what's going on in downtown Amherst, and, you know, the county is very interested in continuing to be a partner and working with you. Sometimes people don't understand what county government does, how we're facilitators, how we're interested and eager to work in partnership with our communities. I'll take a downtown Amherst over a Crocker Park any day of the week, downtown Elyria, Oberlin, list goes on, but, and, you know, it also takes a lot of courage to step out there and run your business, too, so I give you a lot of credit for that, but Main Street there's just done an awesome job, and we're just thrilled to be a part of it and help out in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under number 11, Job and Family Services, approve and enter into various lease agreements effective July 1 of 2016 through June 30 of 2017, for space at 42485 North Ridge Road, Elyria, with costs based on square footage as determined by MAXIMUS. Number one, Job and Family Services, 49,950 square feet, for a total annual amount of $99,900, with monthly payment of $8,325. And Child Support Enforcement Agency, 16,375 square feet, for a total annual amount of $32,979, with a monthly payment of $2,748.27.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Jim, question in regards to the Job and Family Services agreement. That doesn't include the improvements on the new numbers, does it? Because they haven't been started yet?
No. We, we have negotiated with the state. The phone, the new phone systems will be a direct cash payment.
Okay.
We'll be going with some state term, so we're working on that, and he's been working with his folks with Job and Family Services. The rest of the improvements, some are ongoing and more to come, will be wrapped up into a bond issues, and then will more than likely bring it either in the rent or in indirect charges, but we are able to recapture that from the state. But it has not been journalized into these costs yet.
That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under number 12, Workforce Development Agency, approve and enter into lease agreements with Workforce Development Agency for 21,204 square feet of finished office space at 42495 North Ridge Road, Elyria, effective July 1, 2016 through June 30 of 2017. The total rent is $26,378, payable monthly at $2,198.15.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under number 13, the engineer, enter into an agreement with Nagel Masonry in Elyria for necessary off-road ditch and detention work to be performed in accordance with terms of submitted quote, and be paid for by individual ditch fund, as required in order to streamline accounting and allow for each ditch fund to be addressed and paid separately.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam filling-in clerk. I was reading an email from the sheriff that came in earlier in the week, and we have this vest partnership grant program that the federal government assists us with to ensure that proper body armor is provided to our first responders that are always in harm's way, or the potential to be in harm's way, and I want to thank them for the $52 that they allocated us for our vest, which comes out to a dollar and nine cents per vest, per deputy.
Yeah, I'll bet the vest costs a little more than that, doesn't it?
Significantly a lot more than that. Quite frankly, we've invested more than $52 just trying to get in and work on the grant. So, I think the sheriff is completely correct when he says they can keep their $52.
Right. Appreciate your help.
Just amazing. Absolutely. Other than that, I know it's been a busy election season. Congratulations, Commissioner Kokowski, on your success to a fourth term, and to all those newly elected or reelected folks that put themselves out there to really be battered and bruised sometimes, but that's the process. And of course, we now have to make a calm transition at the federal level where the country's going to go, but that's our process. Like it or not like it, that's our process. So, I'm looking forward to how we move forward. That's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have two issues of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
Thursday, the commissioners report, right? Thursday, I attended our meeting for the stepping up initiative, which is trying to help people with mental illness and co-occurring addiction issues to keep them from going into jail. One of the things that have been, we've been talking about a lot is the CIT training, which is crisis intervention training. We need our first responders, more of them, to get that training. Right now, we're sitting, from the data that we received, about 28% of our officers are CIT trained, so they really help in situations to de-escalate and try to keep people from entering the jail system in the first place, especially now that the issue 35 did not pass. We're going to have to find ways of helping people in crisis. Also, I was walking out with our jail administrator, Andy Loventhal, and he let me know we've been talking about a body scanner for the jail, and looks like we might have an opportunity to have one on a trial basis for free for six months, and then an opportunity to purchase at a lot less than what we had anticipated originally. So, that was, that was good news. Friday, Sheriff's Committee had his fundraiser at the lodge, which is a beautiful place out in New Russia Township. He had a great turnout for that, good food, something different instead of spaghetti and steak, we had chicken and ribs, so it was a nice change up. Let's see, then, oh, then that was the, off to the Palace for the, because we were veterans. And then they, each veteran also got a coin. Had all the branches of the military, and then Baller Home on the other side, so they were each presented by the ROTC with that coin. It was a very emotional night, so I hope they do something like that every year, and more people that, more people can attend that. Then Sunday, pancake breakfast at the Lions. It was very well attended, as always, and spent a lot of time at the Board of Elections over the weekend, and the United Auto Workers had a benefit for the needy at a spaghetti dinner at the, or Eagles in Amherst. Then Tuesday, obviously, yesterday was Election Day, and it was a long night. Congratulations to everybody that, that won yesterday, and to those that ran and didn't win. Most everybody ran a very, very professional campaign, so, and thanks to my opponent for being very professional throughout the last few months. And thank you to everybody that voted. End of my report.
Okay. Yeah, very busy week. Let's see, whole lot of things to go over. Yeah, NOAC Executive Committee and Governance Committee met along with putting together our nominations for the executive board for next year. We've recommended this time Holly Brenda to be a Assistant Treasurer, replacing Dick Heidecker, moving people around, but still leaves Lorraine County people out there. That vote will be coming up in January. Also, just a busy weekend. Congratulations to Howard Hannah, their children's fund on Saturday night. Packed house at German's Villa, raising money for their children's fund. Just a busy weekend, and glad the election is all wrapped up. We can go back to maybe watching primetime TV. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To Commissioner Kokowski. Congratulations to those who won. Our country's voted. The Electoral College is how we do it. President-elect Trump will be leading going forward, and we can hope for the best and more civil minds meeting to make things happen, but at the local level, governing shouldn't change. We still have our jobs to do. The county levies got pushed down very bad, SARDI, the Addis Board, the crime lab, the coroner levy, our tuberculosis levy failed, which is just amazing.
Well, it was a reduced levy, too, and it's been a long-term levy. It just shows that it was a no vote.
No vote county-wide. The sales tax again, congratulations to local levies that passed, Dr. Tom Jama and all his supporters with Elyria Schools, Lorraine Fire Levy, Avon, Elyria Township. But we've got to go back worrying about what our budget here is in Lorraine County. We're aware of our shortfall. We've had discussions off and on that if the sales tax didn't pass, we need to work on how we're going to generate more revenue. Speaking with the Assistant County Prosecutor and the County Administrator the past week, enlightened them the defeat, that we should probably get to advertising for public hearings for sales tax increases, whether it be by ballot, by emergency, by imposing, and different scenarios.
Well, I can tell you, Commissioner, that the problems didn't get voted away. The money got voted away, but the problems didn't, and the issues still remain with the Medicaid changes next year. We know that's going to decrease the revenue substantially. Some of the projections are as much as $2 million. Sales tax has been, you know, has taken a nice steady climb, but it's not a climb enough to carry the county through. The loss of $50 to $60 million of interest income over the last several years is what's really hurt us. When I spoke at CHIP, I didn't spend a lot of time asking them to vote for the sales tax, much I tried to explain to them, I wouldn't have the money. I believe that had that revenue materialized and been steady, at one time we were over $8 million a year, and we're barely over a million. I think I referred to it as an anemic return on those investments. That hasn't improved. We've seen the yield curve change a little bit before, but never this dramatic and never this long. And I don't see any improvement in the bond market anytime soon, and even if that does, it'll take two or three years to climb up the yield curve again, because we're only allowed to invest in such restricted instruments for returns, that they're, they're always the tail end of the dog. So, that's a lot of money, and that, that $7 to $8 million a year, quite frankly, equates to a quarter percent sales tax. I think I also said that it wasn't about bad governance, about not properly spending the money and not preserving the resources provided. It's all about that money, for the most part. There are other issues. The strength of the revenues has never been very good. We're 87th out of 88 counties in sales tax. We're 88 out of 88 in inside millage, a percentage that goes to county government, and we're the ninth largest county adjacent to a major metropolitan area with the problems associated with those things. I'm not sure how you could be rock bottom in, in revenue generation and yet be in the upper echelons of, of population and needs in a community. That equation just doesn't work anymore.
Well, we haven't had a permanent increase in the local sales tax, piggyback tax since 1985, with a half percent, other than the quarter percent, which was dedicated to the county jail in '95.
Correct.
So, we're 31 years in general fund, 21 years in, you know, total to help pay for the jail, and the jail outpaces what that quarter percent currently earns.
And folks still don't realize that the state gets five and three-quarter.
Right. Well, let's also, let's also remind that the state has increased three-quarters in the last 12 years without, without any consent to the folks at all.
Right.
Three-quarters percent, which is hugely significant amount of money that leaves Lorraine County in the sales tax. We keep a paltry portion of the sales tax. The rest is remanded to the state. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a good balanced equation. The state continues to provide less, and they continue to take more. That, that leaves us really struggling. Local government funds have dropped off. The casino revenues that we were promised never materialized to the level they were supposed to, because the state reneged on the recino gambling, so the money that went into recino gambling did not have the same caveats that were actually voted on by the state of Ohio residents. That was enacted legislatively, which drew money out of the casinos and was not subject to local distribution to governments. We could go on and on and on. I don't care who's down there, Republicans or Democrats, we're by ourselves.
Well, you figure at the five and three-quarter percent, it's over $200 million a year in local sales tax goes to Columbus, where we try to operate on, you know, $26 or $27 million of it to operate our county jail and our county government.
The, and remember the projections on the casino gambling?
Oh, yeah. 8.3 million dollars.
$8.3 million Lorraine County was going to get. And I think we're at-
3.7, 3.8 this year, Lisa?
A little over 3.6.
A little bit over 3.6.
And, and, and let me point out that the only reason we've been able to survive as long as we have been in the face of massive cuts, we've attempted three times at a sales tax increase, was actually, even though it's not what they promised, it's that extra revenue was coming in there, and a lot of one-offs that we made, selling property, realigning, funding opportunities, and of course-
Refinancing buildings.
Refinancing some of our bonds, outstanding bonds. We financed the Justice Center a few years ago, decreased death service on that. So, we've, we've maneuvered as, as best we can each time to, to meet the challenges going forward, but I can tell you that there's not a lot of rabbits left in the hat. In fact, quite frankly, there's a hole in the hat. It's not going to be really pretty for 2017. Problems are there. They're not going to go away, and, and we're going to have to face the reality that we need significant either revenue enhancements or changes, which are going to really, really be dramatic this time.
Well, with the consent of the board, I'd like to instruct the Administrator and County Prosecutor to work out dates for public hearings and advertising.
Yeah.
We can, we can certainly start that, that, well, we start pushing that wheel uphill.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, I certainly support that, you know, I guess I'm the newest set of eyes. Is this your commissioner's report, if you don't mind?
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm done.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I'm the newest set of eyes, the fresh set of eyes. People always say, "Well, it's nice to have a, you know, new set of eyes, look at things, and see what it looks like." And, you know, I also served on, you know, finance down in Columbus, and, you know, worked in local government with the City of Elyria, been on Avon Lake City Council, and probably not a worse time to come into office for me, I can tell you that. The finances were looking very dark when I came in. Quite frankly, I think some of my early questions and conversations when I got here was, "How in the world did you even manage to get this far?", you know, with patching and plugging up holes and finding one-time money. You know, and I know it's real popular in the public to, you know, pound on the walls and say, "Oh, government just spends money like drunken sailors." Well, that's not the case here. We've been just managing to pay the bills, finding ways to pay the bills. Anytime that you say to the public that you need more money, they say, "Why do you, why are you asking me for more money right now?", and they don't stop to think about all the years that have gone by where you weren't asked for more money, because we were finding the one-time fixes. I've said it before, the Band-Aid is, or the Band-Aid box is out of Band-Aids. We're just, quite frankly, out of money, folks. And looking at $2 million, $3 million, you know, shortfall, the carryovers have been going down consistently. When I served in Columbus, you know, I constantly talked about the impact that the changes that were being made in Columbus were going to have at home. I was in the minority, didn't have the votes. When the votes were taken, it resulted in less money for local governments. You know, there's a reason why you see the schools and the communities and the county all putting lots of issues before you, because everything has been pushed down to the local level. And as the commissioner pointed out in the county administrator, you know, in Columbus, they did raise your sales tax. I didn't hear everybody up in arms when, you know, this legislature just raised the sales tax. And, you know, that's, that's supposed to be the only area that we really have to operate with. People are shocked when I tell them that of that 6.5%, of which there's only four counties- only four counties out of 88 counties that have that low of a sales tax, that five and three-quarters goes to the state. We don't get all, all of that money. In conversations with, you know, the prosecutor's office he's talking about, we may need to start prioritizing our cases because we're just totally overrun by this heroin epidemic when it comes to managing those cases and prosecuting those cases. You know, we have a responsibility to make sure that the county is kept safe with the sheriff patrols. You know, we're borrowing now for patrol cars that, we still have the loans out there when the cars have more than enough miles where you can't really drive them anymore. Got to turn them over. So we have the heroin epidemic, we have the, you know, the safety concerns, and we have the State of Ohio where at one time we were as high as $9 million local government funds and $6 million. Now we're around $3 million. This was pointed out, you know, when you try to put money in the bank to garner some interest, it, before it was $7 million. Now we're lucky if it's over $1 million. And compare it to your home situation. If your spouse came home and said, all of a sudden, my boss told me they're going to cut my pay two-thirds, you know, that's, that's a lot less revenue you have coming into your household. And that's what's happening with our household. Columbus is holding the money. The money is not coming back. And we have no choice but to go to the voters and go to the public and say that, you know, this is the support that we need. It is a severe financial crisis that we're facing here. And I'll call it a crisis because when you don't have the money, but you have the commitments, it's a crisis. You know, when you look at, at models, the business model is to make a profit. And to make a profit in the private sector, you have to raise prices sometimes to accomplish that, to make your business successful and to keep people employed. In government, we're not motivated by profit. Our responsibility is to provide a service. And the only way that we can provide a service based upon the government model is you have to have the revenue, and the revenue comes from taxes. So, you know, we're, we will need to have these hearings. We're going to need to have these discussions. We're going to need to educate the public more about just how serious this situation is. And as the administrator pointed out, the needs don't go away. The heroin epidemic doesn't magically disappear. People not being able to find work or get to work because they don't have transportation to get there doesn't magically go away. It's still a problem that's there. So we're hoping that we can, you know, garner more public support or at least a better understanding. But the need is there, the need is great, and it's reckoning day. I mean, the need is now. And I, you know, can't thank my colleagues enough for all that you have done over the years to patch the holes and do the one-time fixes. I'm surprised that you managed to hobble and crawl and get this far. But at this point, we have to, we have to cross this bridge and have these discussions and make some tough decisions. But our ultimate responsibility is to make sure people in this county are kept safe, to make sure that we were able to deliver the services that are expected from this county government. And that is what we're going to do at the end of the day. Do we need, do you need an official? No? Okay. So the administrator's been directed?
Okay.
Okay.
Board correspondents?
Well, I'd like to, could I give the rest of my board report? That's okay. After my long...
Sorry to use your a lot of time.
My long lecture there. Sorry. After my long lecture. Just wanted to update everyone. Lakefront Lorraine County, our Lakefront Community Leadership Members have met. We are going to be announcing shortly a vendor we've selected who will be putting together a lakefront plan for Lorraine County. Something's never been done. This is another example of how the Commissioners are working in, as a facilitator, working in partnership with our communities to move our communities forward. This is going to be good for the whole county, especially the lakefront communities who really need a, an economic shot in the arm. The Chamber Expo in Avon, very well attended again. They always have a great turnout and Tony Gallo and his whole staff and team and all the members of the Chamber who participated. If you've never made one of these Chamber Expos at Tom's Country Place each year, do make time to get out there. It's always good to see all the businesses and everybody networking and working together. That's what it's all about. We, we as a county try to keep as much of the business in the county as we can because it's good to turn those dollars here locally. Sheriff's Committee, another great event. As you said, over at the New Russia Facility, what a, what a beautiful facility over there. Wasn't able to make the special tribute for Valor Home on Friday night to Palace, but I understand that went very well and it was quite a, quite a moving video. It's part of the harsh reality and, you know, there's another example of how government helps people. You know, helps our, helps our veterans. And so, you know, government does a lot of good things in society and in the world. It's about good government. It shouldn't be about anti-government. El Centro had a nice event on Saturday night. Victor Leandry and everybody over there doing an amazing job helping out our county and moving our county and our community forward. The Bagel Brunch was held at the Temple in Elyria. That's always a great event each year. And folks there are just some of the friendliest people you ever meet. Just great to sit down and have some great conversation. And, and it's probably one of the few places where they actually enjoy seeing politicians and candidates running. They really see it as an opportunity to have a face-to-face and a one-on-one conversation with people. Wasn't able to make the Feed the Needy at the UAW on Sunday. You know, did send support for that, for that event. I hope that that went well. My wife is a Browns fan, but also a Cowboys fan, so it was interesting watching her. She wanted to go to the game, so took her to the game and went and got a bag of peanuts, came up. This was right around early start of the first quarter and all these people were standing up with their camera phones. And, and she's sitting there. And I said to her, are they all taking pictures of you? What, you know, what's going on here? She said, you would think these folks had never seen LeBron James before. About four rows behind us was a loge and LeBron and the Cavs were watching the game back there. So supposedly...
They didn't invite you in?
No, they didn't invite me in. And was it Khloe Kardashian was there as well, too? And if I can give Tristan any advice, it's run as fast as you can. Just get away. Also, wanted to point out, if I could, a letter that we received, and I hope you don't mind me reading this, but this is a letter, "Dear Commissioners, as you know, for the past year, the General Division of the Common Pleas Court has been working closely with numerous personnel from your office to move forward with a permanent location for the Lorraine County Probation Department. This has certainly been a challenging process, but one that has been made much easier due to the professionalism and competency of your staff. We've successfully completed two of the early stages of this journey, development of plans for the old courthouse and temporary relocation of probation staff to Broad Street. I know the staff who now occupy that building are extremely pleased with the county's efforts on their behalf. Through this process, Judge Betlesky and I have worked closely with Jim Cordez, Karen Davis and Ernie Smith, and their work on this project has been exemplary. We also would like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the Maintenance and IT Departments in setting up the Broad Street facility. We certainly understand that there is still a lot of work to accomplish before the probation department can be united and its permanent home in the old courthouse. Nevertheless, with the continued cooperation of you and your staff, we feel confident that before we know it, our shared goal will be realized, assigned by Administrative Judge Betlesky and Court Administrator Looby." So we very much appreciate that letter. I want to thank our administrator and Karen Davis and Ernie Smith and Maintenance and IT and everybody that's worked on that. And another example of how we're working together here in county government to, to get things done. Congratulations to all the winners in the election. You know, as I even stated on Facebook this morning, I always stress as a public servant, the importance of us working together. Obviously, that's going to be tested a little bit. Unfortunately, we have a deep divide in the country, but the most important thing is we need to realize that our families and our children are counting on us to work together to move our county, our state and our country forward. It all starts with respect, folks, and we need civility in this country. So it begins with each and every one of us. So let's do the right thing and move forward. That completes my report.
Okay. There's no Clerk's Report today. Board correspondents?
I would move that we approve the board correspondents and waive the reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Any public comment today?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning? I see some folks I haven't seen in the room in a while. No gentlemen? No? Okay. Seeing no one wishing to participate in public comment this morning, then I would move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues that were outlined by the County Administrator and the legal issues outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.